I'd like to call the August 10th regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the City of Post Falls to order. Will you please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Again, a reminder, if you do wish to speak tonight, make sure that you fill out paperwork in the back and turn it in on front. And with that, we'll start with roll call.
Carrie?
Here.
Hampi?
Here.
Stephenson?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Schlotenauer?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
Campbell?
Here.
All right. Do we have any amendments to the agenda this evening?
There's none.
Do we have any ceremonies? I have a hard time saying that. Ceremonies, announcements, appointments, and/or presentations?
None there either.
Commissioners, now's your time. Any declaration of conflict with any of the hearings this evening?
No, sir.
No.
Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Mr. Manley?
Yeah, item A is the meeting minutes from July 13th, 2021. Item B is the zoning recommendation of the Gondo annexation, file number ANX92021. Item C is the zoning recommendation of Tulmore 9th zone change, file number RZNE52021. Item D is the zoning recommendation for Pleasant View Meadows annexation, file number ANNX72021. Item E is the reasoned decision for Passer View Estates subdivision, file number SUBD82021. And item F is the zoning recommendation of the SMOCK zone change, file number RZNE62021.
Commissioners, well, we had time to go over everything in the packet. At this point, we'll look for a motion.
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
I second.
Got a motion, a second. Further comment? Seeing none, call for vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Schlotenauer?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
All right. Moving along to citizen issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the commission on an issue that is not on the agenda for this evening. Comments on issues that are planned in the future, we ask that you would hold until that meeting. Do we have any citizen issues this evening? Okay, seeing none. I believe we have no unfinished or old business, correct?
That is correct.
That will bring us then to public hearings, so we will go ahead and open up the first Boyd's Landing subdivision.
Laura, take it away.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Laura Jones, Associate Planner with the City of Post Falls, here to present Boyd's Landing subdivision. Before we get into the actual hearing information, I want to disclose that this site was posted in accordance with Idaho State statute on July 28th. However, it came to our attention last Friday on the 6th of August that the sign had been vandalized, and it was replaced the same day. So there was potentially a day somewhere within that nine-day timeframe that the sign may have been unreadable due to vandalism. But I just wanted to make you aware of that situation.
Moving on.
Can I ask, was the sign, was the piece there, though, like, that's like the piece of it, so somebody could read it?
They could pick them up and, yeah, but just somebody driving by or slowing down in their vehicle would not have been able to make out what the hearing was for. But you can still see it says "public hearing notice" at the top, and if they had inclined interest, they could get out of their vehicle and observe.
Out and take a look, and, yeah, get that information. Okay.
Okay, moving on. The property owner is Don Boyd, and the applicant is Ace Solutions. Their requested action tonight is to review and approve the proposed 11.86 acre and 43-lot subdivision, determining that it meets the requirements of the Post Falls Municipal Code. The project is located north of East Bogie Drive and east of North Greens Ferry. This property was recently brought before the Planning and Zoning Commission for annexation, and it was the Boyd annexation. City Council approved it on July 13th with R1 zoning. Looking at the parcel information, the land's currently vacant without significant topography and vegetation, which would hinder development. The water provider is Ross Point Water District, and the City of Post Falls will be the sewer provider. Looking at the zoning, as just mentioned, it has now been annexed into the city with R1 zoning. All of the surrounding properties that are located within the city limits are also R1, and all of the properties that are within Cootney County are zoned agriculture. Directly to the west, so the property, the subject properties in red here at the bottom of the screen, directly west here is Jacob's Run, which was built out over the last year with single-family homes. It's an R1 subdivision. To the north is Corbin Meadows. It has been approved but not developed. It's a 77-lot R1 subdivision. And then just north, we've recently reviewed the Brennan Annexation, which has also been approved with R1 zoning. We have not gotten a subdivision application on that, but we've had meetings, and that should be coming forward in the next few months. But this is just to give you an idea of how that area is developing and the connectivity. Looking at the proposed plans, again, it's 11.86 acres, 43 lots. The density will be 3.6 units per acre, and the lots range in size from about 6,500 square feet, which is the minimum for that zone, up to about 9,700 square feet. And all lots meet the minimum lot width of 65 feet. Looking at the subdivision review criteria, the first is dealing with water supply, and Ross Point Water District is the water purveyor, and they've provided a will-serv letter for both domestic and irrigation water. The second is dealing with wastewater, and the city's water reclamation system has the capacity to provide service for the subdivision. And city staff has just noted that there's minor revisions that need to be put into the plan to conform to the city's design standards, and that will be reviewed when they actually come forward with their plans. Also, just to note on that, the wastewater will connect to other facilities within Corbin Meadows that are not currently installed. So it's our understanding that these two developments will be constructed simultaneously, but if they do not, and Boyd's Landing precedes Corbin Meadows, then this project will be responsible for putting those facilities in. Oh, excuse me. Looking at the third review criteria, looking into the transportation element, city engineering staff provided comment stating that the proposed layout accommodates connectivity, and it will not have a negative impact on the local transportation system. Additionally, the streets are to be constructed to the roadway standard outlined in the city's transportation master plan. Number four is dealing with, as noted earlier, there's no soil or topographical conditions which have been identified as presenting hazards for this development. The fifth criteria is that the proposed, the area proposed for subdivision is zoned for the proposed use, and the use conforms to other requirements found in this code. As again I mentioned, it was recently annexed as R1 and within the city limits, and the proposed subdivision conforms to the R1 standards. Lastly, the developer has made adequate plans to ensure that the community will bear no more than its fair share cost to provide services by paying fees. Fees will be assessed at the time of building permit application to help mitigate the impacts to parks, public safety, and streets, as well as our new multimodal impact fee. Here's a list of the agencies that were routed for review and given a chance to comment on the project. Of those agencies, two responded. Cootney County Fire and Rescue was neutral to the project, and Idaho Department of Environmental Quality had comments that will be relevant during the time of construction. With that, I can take any questions, Yav.
I have, I have one about the roads here. So they're going to come out on Bogie?
Yeah, I'll go back to that.
Is there three of them?
So there are three that come out on Bogie, and then one that connects through Corbin Meadows up to Bluegrass.
Okay, so is one of those three, does it, is it in line with the development across the street? And I was trying to see what the name of that road is, but like, Enley or something, Lane? And it, do they connect? I mean, are they going to be?
Typically, that is how we prefer them to, but I can have Rob Paulus come up and answer that. I believe Ethan just said that that's Renley Estates to the south. So that's a subdivision that was approved either in 2019 or 2020, and is currently being constructed and built out.
Okay. So, so if we're looking at that one, this map up here, I'm sorry, I'm, so where is, where is Bogie on there?
Bogie's right here at the very bottom of the screen.
Okay, okay.
And then this is Corbin Meadows that has not been built out or constructed yet, and Bluegrass is here.
Okay, so then, the, just, I guess, south of this proposed development, that development, you said, has been approved but has not actually been built yet?
They, it's under construction currently.
Okay.
So I believe all the streets are in, and I believe we've started issuing building permits on it.
Okay, so if the streets are in, then one of those streets would probably connect, would kind of be a, right across Bogie and?
That's what we attempt to do. I can let Rob Paulus jump in, and he'll have a definite answer for you on that.
Good evening. Robert Paulus, Assistant City Engineer, Mr. Chair, Madam Commissioner. In your question, yes, Renley Estates is substantially completed and constructed, and the preliminary layout of this does align with the center line of the roads lining up, and that is our standard procedure.
Okay, that, and that was my question.
Other questions?
Well, I do have one more.
Go ahead.
So there was a Ross Point Water District, there was a will-serv letter, and it has requirements. And number five says, "The water is currently serviced to this property by Prairie Water Association, and all the water rights associated with property, with property must be transferred to Ross Point Water District." So is that being done? I mean, is that any concern if they won't transfer the water rights to, I mean, if they, if one water district has them, are they just going to give them to another water district?
So I can let Ace Solutions speak to this, but it's my understanding.
Mr. Paulus is going to speak to it as well?
All right.
Okay.
Good evening. Robert Paulus, Assistant City Engineer, again. So when this property was annexed into the City of Post Falls, part of their annexation agreement is they agree to transfer their water rights to the water purveyor of the area. So they've already made that agreement in the annexation that they will give their portion of the water rights to the Ross Point Water District. And historically, the, about in this location here is where the water wellhouse is for that Prairie Water Association. And the subdivision, the Corbin Meadows up here, they did the same thing. They got rid of their water rights, they're putting in Ross Point's water system, and then the same thing is going to be happening with this subdivision. With the subdivision, new water mains go in that will connect to Ross Point Water, and between now and when the construction is done, the water rights will be transferred to Ross Point Water.
Okay.
But that agreement already took place at the time of annexation.
At annexation, that's when we take care of that agreement.
So, so Prairie Water Association agreed to transfer any water rights for that?
Prairie Water Association has certain water rights. Underlying properties within that association may or may not have individual rights. So anything that's directly attached to this property, they would be able to transfer to the Ross Point Water District.
They would be able to?
Yes, and they would be required to in this case. It's just that if, if the Prairie Water Association has water rights that are assigned to them but aren't associated directly to that parcel of land, then they can't get rid of something they don't actually possess and own.
Okay.
And the existing users that are using it, because there's still some five-acre lots needing water that aren't a part of Ross Point, they're going to still have their ability to use that water from that. It won't ultimately get transferred until the whole area gets infilled.
Okay, okay. So then all the rights will go over to Ross Point, because they will be servicing all of those?
Because the whole area will be in the City of Post Falls someday, but until then, the existing users aren't losing anything.
Okay, okay. And I guess that was a lot of my question, is how are you taking from, are they agreeable to you taking, you know, giving up your water rights?
They're able to continue providing service that they provide.
Okay.
Other questions?
That was it.
Just clarification. Bogie's not finished in that area, but between this development and then Renley, will it be finished? I think?
So Bogie Avenue at this location, Renley Estates constructed their centerline plus 10 improvements. So this project will put in the remainder, and when the subdivision immediately, when this, Jacob's Run went in, they put in centerline plus 10 improvements of the roadway. So we have a paved roadway from here to here right now. With this project, if it's approved and when it's constructed, we'll have the full width improvements to that point, and then we'll be left with a, basically a gravel roadway from this point to this point, which will eventually get filled in. We have been marking that section as public roadway, not maintained by the public. It is public right-of-way, but because it hasn't been constructed to city standards, or in this case, it's in the county since it hasn't been constructed to the Post Falls Highway District standards, the Post Falls Highway District does not provide maintenance of that roadway.
Thanks.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you both. Let the applicant up at this time.
Good evening. My name is Nick Ebner. I'm an engineer with Ace Solutions, 609 North Calgary Court, here in Post Falls. Thank you very much, Laura, for that presentation, and Rob, too, for your comments. Just wanted to resummarize some of the things that were already in the report, you know, that we're adding. We're looking to add 43 lots, total of 3.63 units or lots per acre, and the average is just under 8,000 square feet per lot. As we, as we was just talking about here, the water's going to be served by Ross Point. Thank you, Rob, for that summary. It'll be taken, they'll be taken over from Prairie Water that is currently serving it. One thing that was mentioned at the original planning and zoning meeting and city council, and is in the plan, there is a water main for Prairie Water that runs more or less north-south this direction right here, right through this block. We are planning at the moment to move it more or less to this back lot line, and with their cooperation, we'll also have a, probably most likely be an easement so that they can access that if need be. We're also, we've been told, we're not certain of how many units it serves to the south, so it's possible we may be able to, to continue the loop to the, to the east somehow, but until we talk to them, we're not going to make any firm plans other than to, you know, possibly provide an easement right through the north-south of that, of that line. So once we get that figured out, that'll be, we'll ultimately determine that during the construction phase, I believe. But I've been told that might be a possibility, that we can maybe cut that at the north property line and, and move it east, but we'll see when we get to that.
So really quick, just to clarify, just so we completely understand?
Yeah.
So even though Superior Water Association's got a main that runs across that property, but in the end, they'll make sure that their water main is not diminished, and the ability to serve the adjacent properties is not diminished?
Correct, yes. Yeah, no matter what we do, we will make sure that they will be able to continue to serve their properties, and that, yeah, that none of their services diminish. So, yeah, thank you. Yeah, the sewer, as we also mentioned, will be, will be mainly connecting down at Bogie. We've got three connection points along the three streets. That's the same with the water, too. We'll have three connection points to the main in Bogie. These streets, as, as we've mentioned here, we've got Coco, Cinder, Renley, which is that north-south one, and then this east-west one right here is called Cinder. Those are all more or less continuations of other city streets. This Cinder one's the toughest one to see. We've got two lots over here, and then Cinder is right here. So the thought is, when these two lots develop, we'll be able to have a continuous street that runs through all the way to Greens Ferry as well when this other lot develops. So to answer your question for another, which was answered, Renley does line up with the one from the south. Natty lines up with Jacob's Run, and Coco will line up with Corbin's Meadow. And then we have two new streets, which are called Joan, Joan Rachel, I believe is how it's pronounced, and Charlene Kelsey. Those are both north-south streets right here and here. Yeah, and I don't, in the packet, we did want to highlight there, we have one little weird triangular lot up there at the north. We're calling it Block 3 at the moment, Lot 1, Block 3. If you look at your plan, we were able to highlight, I think what we landed on there was, we could fit a 2,000-square-foot house along with a 600-square-foot separated garage on that, and obviously, there's many different configurations you can get off of that, but it, it didn't really have that much of an issue with building a pretty decent-sized home on that one lot. So, because that was something we saw, it, the backyard is a little bit odd-shaped, and, but the builder will have to kind of get creative with that a little bit. But I think if we're, if he's able to focus the house kind of in the front and, and work, work around that backyard, he should be able to make something pretty, pretty good size, and it won't be an odd little duck of, of the neighborhood once everything else kind of gets complete. So, yeah. Thank you very much for your time. Any questions?
Questions for applicant? All right. Thank you very much. Any comment in favor for?
We have none.
Any neutral?
We have none.
Any opposed?
We have none.
Okay, then there would be no need for rebuttal. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Anyone else before we proceed? No, nothing else?
No.
Okay. Then we'll go ahead and close the hearing. I'll open up for comment. Anyone care to share?
I'll start. Nice little infill. They've done a, I think they've done an admirable, admirable job of providing connectivity out to the adjoining properties. That's one of the hardest things to do with these little infill projects, is to make sure that you point roads at adjacent properties to make them buildable and connect, or developable in the future. So I think they've done a really good job doing that. And, you know, really, aside from that, they've met the subdivision criteria, the waters, the sewers there. There's no crazy topography. We haven't heard about any, any landfills on the property. And all the lots meet the zoning code, based on what I've seen here, so the lot width, lot size. And so I think it meets all the criteria for approval.
Vicky?
I agree with Ray on that, too. I think it's a good just infill there. I'm glad to see stuff filling in some of the gaps we have. That's kind of a spotted area around there right now, so it's kind of nice to just kind of seeing it filling in, the roads being completed. So I think it's a good fit.
James?
Same thing. It's a good infill. The connectivity is good for these, the development here, and then anything future with water, sewer, and roads. It's a good infill property.
Can we have you over here? Kevin?
I think it's a good fit. I'd just like to see the rest of the remainder of that road fixed for the guys that aren't developing yet, those lots that sit there. That road's pretty tore up. It's, in the wintertime, it's full of two-foot-deep potholes that they got to drive through. And it used to be, wasn't a year ago, it was blocked off, you know, and people were going around the barricade. Now it's two, two lanes of traffic each way every time you go down it. But other than that, I think it's a good fit for the area. It's what it's designed for.
Ross, any thoughts?
I agree. Good fit.
Okay. Nancy, bring us home.
I'm just kind of, kind of echo what the other commissioner said. I think it is good infill. I did have a couple of concerns, but the connectivity is a bonus. I mean, getting some things to connect over there and some roads that actually go to somewhere makes a lot of sense. So I think it's a good project.
Yeah, I, I agree with everyone. I do think it's interesting. Do we, do we know, I'm assuming the vandalism of those particular signs are a pretty rare occurrence. I have not heard of that happening in the past.
It is pretty rare. It's probably the first time I can remember, outside of Mother Nature taking its toll.
Right, right. Well, we know there's wind on the prairie, but unfortunate and interesting both. But at this point, I would entertain a motion. I see pointing going on, but.
Go ahead. You got it?
Now, do you want to do it?
All right, I'll move to approve, let's see, Boyd's Landing subdivision file, SUBD 00102021, finding that it meets the approval criteria in the Post Falls Municipal Code as outlined in our discussion and deliberation that we just had. Subject to the conditions, if I can find them.
1 through 8.
1 through 8, contained in the staff report, and direct staff to prepare a written reasoned decision.
I second.
It's been a motion, second. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Schlotenauer?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, so moved. Moving right along. We're good. We don't need a break. Kevin, you good? All right. We'll go ahead and open up the Blue Spruce Meadows subdivision. Ethan to present.
Good evening, Commissioners. Ethan Porter here to present the Blue Spruce Meadows subdivision. The owner of this property is Wildflower Meadows Properties LLC. The applicant is Ace Solutions, who is here tonight to represent, and the requested action from them is to review and approve the proposed subdivision. That is modifying a previously approved plan called Wildflower Meadows, which I'll go into in the slides upcoming. Basically, they're changing from 18 duplex and two twin-home lots from the previously approved Wildflower Meadows subdivision to 38 twin-home lots. And we, and they're asking that you determine that it meets the requirements of the Post Falls Municipal Code. Kind of going into detail then on that, here's where the site is located. It's at the, it's west of Maguire and south of Midway, at the intersection of Midway and Maguire. Just a five, approximately five-acre parcel there. Here is what was previously approved. I'm going to go through some history on the upcoming slide as well to kind of break it down, because there's a lot going on with this one property, but the... But, the red outline is basically the property that we're looking at there. That is the western half of Wildflower Meadows subdivision that was already approved. This is the most recent approval. As you can see, the east and the west portions, they were separate owners, or they are separate owners, and they came through to do the subdivision together. So, they are just basically asking that their duplex lots and the twin-home lots there are all just changed to twin-home lots. So, the duplex allows for two units on that one parcel, and then the twin-homes is just one structure, basically with the common wall, separated by the lot line. So really, it's a duplex with just a lot line in the middle, essentially. So they're just asking for basically a lot-line difference, and here, just more lot-lines, but the same amount of units on this acreage. So I don't want you to get confused with that, but go ahead.
I was going to say, for clarification, there is no change in density as far as units.
Correct. They are still able to do the exact same as they were before.
Okay.
And Ethan, just, pretty much, it's going to look like a row of duplex, or just, it's going to look like the exact same thing going down the street, it's just...
Correct. You won't see the invisible lotlines.
There's going to be an invisible lotline, and the opportunity for ownership of each one of the units independently, instead of...
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So, that's the western half of Wildflower Meadows, this discussion here. It's considered Blue Spruce Meadows. Looking at that property history, they came through through annexation with the R2 zoning that was approved. They applied for that in 2018. Then they came through with the actual subdivision. In 2019, that was approved for 38 single-family homes across the two properties. And then, the eastern half of the Wildflower Meadows came through and amended it to be 27 duplexes and 17 twin-home lots. And now, Blue Spruce Meadows, which is this proposal tonight, is the western half, wanting to change their lots. So, hopefully, that kind of gives you an idea of what's happening. There's a lot going on with this, but it's been reviewed multiple times. So, forgive me for the repetition. Currently, the land use on this site is just a single-family home. The staff report, there is an oversight. It does say single-family home within Cooney County. It is not in the county. As I mentioned before, it was previously annexed already, so, with R2 zoning. The soil and topographical conditions on this site, there were none identified that create any issues for development or safety hazards. The water provider for this area is East Green Acres Irrigation District, and the sewer would be provided by the City of Post Falls. Here again, you can see it was annexed in, R2 zoning. The black hatched is the subject property. North is the county lands, to the west is county. You have R1 subdivision, Gabrielle Estates, to the south. And then you have R2 zoning, the remainder of the eastern half of Wildflower Meadows, to the east, R2 zoning as well. So the proposed subdivision, like I said, they want to do twin-home lots. The number of lots is 38 for this. They're proposing the maximum lot size is just over 6,000. The minimum lot size is just over 3,500, which is well above the minimum requirement for a twin-home lot. The density comes out about 8.1 units per acre. And then you can see as well, that Wildflower Meadows is labeled on the eastern part of that proposed plan. So the subdivision review criteria basically has been done twice now, since the Wildflower Meadows, and then the amendment came through. So, there are provisions for water and sewer. The road layout has not changed, just the lots. And so, the proposed streets are still consistent with the transportation element of the conference of plan. And then, the soil, like I mentioned before, there's no issues there on sites that have been identified causing any safety concerns. The area is zoned and appropriate for the density, as well as the type of use for twin-homes. And the developer, through building permits, will make sure that impact fees are paid for public safety, streets, parks, and the multimodal fees for making sure that the community doesn't bear their, more than their fair share of cost for this. So, here, the agencies were notified, listed here. And then of those comments were the police department, remaining neutral. The Post Falls Highway District did have concerns of increased traffic on Midway Avenue, and to work with the city for future growth. This is more appropriate comment, primarily for the annexation and the zoning of it, not really the subdivision portion. And the previous two, Wildflower Meadows subdivision and the amendment to that original plan, they had no comments for those who were remaining neutral. The Department of Environmental Quality, they had general comments pertaining to the time of construction as well. So, here you can see what they are proposing versus what was approved, and the highlighted section of what they are changing. So, I can entertain any questions you may have for city staff at this time. That's a lot to take in.
Questions for staff?
No.
So you said, the Highway District had no comments previously, but on this one, they did have comments?
Correct, which I'm not sure why, but they voiced their concerns of increased traffic and wanted to work with the city for future growth.
So then with this development, what will, what improvements will be made?
Nothing is really changing transportation-wise. And city staff has already reviewed transportation element, conference of plan, through the multiple amendments to the Wildflower Meadows. Nothing is really changing with that, so I'm not sure why they put that comment in there.
Is Midway built out?
It isn't right now, but through the subdivision process, it will be, so...
In order for complete clarification, Mr. Paulus, do you want to...
There we go.
I saw him getting, he was on the edge of his seat.
What are they getting at, Rob?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Robert Paulus, Assistant City Engineer. So, what you had happen with Post Falls Highway District is they have had a change of leadership and directors since the time of the original Wildflower Meadows. And we do acknowledge and know that that is a triple-shot road, which is what they identified in their letter to the City of Post Falls. What we see transpiring with the subdivision is that when they make the connection to sanitary sewer, they will connect in at Maguire Road and bring it down Midway Avenue. And while it, whether it's Wildflower or this project, they will be tearing out all of Midway Avenue along that frontage, and replacing that chip-seal road with a city standard, two, let's see, Midway Avenue minor, yeah, two inches of asphalt on four inches of rock at that location. And that will be a stronger structural section than what is out there today. We foresee that with initial development out here, that most traffic will go to Maguire Road and use Maguire Road to move north-south, because that is a larger roadway, higher speed, and is a more direct route than taking Midway Avenue to the west, which is a slower or lower speed limit, and then goes to Corbin Road, which is still low-speed roadway. So Maguire Road is your quickest way to get either north to Prairie or south to Southeast Way, and then move east and west from that location. So, as things develop further to the west, we'll see Midway continue to be developed and upgraded.
I had a question for Rob, if that...
No, good, thanks.
... takes care of you. I saw in one of the conditions of approval, the restriction of the driveway width to no more than 40%. If I'm doing the math right, that's a 12-foot driveway. And so that puts it at a solid, not quite two-car, right? So, two-car driveway, 17 feet wide. I would think it'd be more efficient use of space to add five feet, to allow them to go to a 17-foot-wide driveway, and take five feet out of the street, or out of the available street frontage for parking, but actually gain a parking spot by doing that.
I'm going to defer your question over to Mr. Manley on that.
Okay.
The purpose of that, so each lot can potentially have an on-street car. 12 and 18 sums to 30. Not only that, we've seen some other incidences when we go beyond 40% in subdivisions. We get not as much width for space for swells, garbage cans, and post office collection, when it gets realized mostly is in the winters. So the reason for it is not to provide two-way traffic on a single-family lot, is to provide a one-way lane, and that's into the residence.
Okay, I'm, I just, it's a more efficient use, if we allow them extra five feet, than we get one car off the street, versus that...
Potentially.
I mean, it just...
You end up with, instead of having 38 feet between the driveways, two cars, you'd end up with 28 feet, and only have one car between the two houses. So you'd lose basically a parking stall per, for every two houses, if you went, gained the five.
Sure, but you actually gain more in-between. So, I don't know. I just think it's a, I think it might be more efficient use. That's just my engineer brain working, so...
And Commissioner Kimball, one other thing. The width restriction applies only in the public right-of-way portion. That does not preclude a, our home or townhouse, as they go in, or twin-home, from putting a wider driveway behind the sidewalk. So they can get that additional width, if they want it at that location.
Okay.
Okay. Further questions?
Is Midway notoriously, is it narrower than most?
Midway Avenue, as it's constructed today, is approximately 28 feet wide, which is standard for in the rural areas.
Sure.
It does not pose an issue from the City of Post Falls standard. If we were to apply city width standards, we would typically look at a 24-foot-wide road as a minimum, with no on-street parking on it. If you drive out in that area, there isn't a lot of really good opportunities for on-street parking to begin with. So 28 feet and the rural nature of it does allow traffic to move up and down, and provide for emergency services as well.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Do we need to bring Ethan back up? Any questions? No? No? Thank you, sir. Invite the applicant up.
Roger Glessner with A Solutions, 609 Calgary Court, Post Falls, Idaho. And we represent the owner of this property. As you guys have already realized, there's a lot of back history on this property. The recent change is due to the owner of half of this development, the part this outlined, had passed away, and so there's a new owner on the property now. And so, with their market analysis and the type of structures that they want to build, they realize that it'd be more affordable and more efficient if they went with townhomes. With this change, it doesn't really change the density, the unit density of the property. It doesn't add any more services to the property, it really doesn't add any more traffic. So, none of those impacts are changing with the previous approved subdivision. These lots, the twin-homes, as they're laid out in this drawing, they're between 30 and 34 feet wide. They vary a little bit, so they aren't the minimum size that's allowed under the zoning. And with 11- or 12-foot driveway on there, you know, we have adequate space along the street frontage for one more parked car within the front of, or the confines of the lot. The streets, the connectivity for the future, and connectivity onto Midway, none of that is changing. We did reach out to East Green Acres Water Service, and they still will serve the property. The city has indicated that sewer, this isn't going to be an increase or a problem with the sewer, and everything else kind of remains the same. The big change is twin-homes, rather than duplexes. So, as somebody had mentioned earlier, that creates a lot line down the center of the structure. Still the same dwelling units, relatively the same frontage and driveway width, if you look at it as the duplex, as a single unit. I think that's it. If anybody has any questions?
Questions for applicant? Not at this time. Thank you very much, sir. Those wishing to speak or comment in favor?
We have none.
Neutral?
We have none.
Opposed?
We have none.
Okay, so, no need to have applicant return. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Staff?
So, on this City of Post Falls, the Post Falls Highway District letter, where it has some concerns regarding the increased traffic, it does say, the second paragraph, the district would like to work with the city for a solution to road maintenance and improvements during this time of growth. So, I mean, is, are you guys working with the, with Post Falls Road District? Is this something that they're trying to make sure that they ease any concerns that they might have regarding this, or are they in the loop at all?
The City of Post Falls does work in cooperation with the Post Falls Highway District. We do some sharing, where they will plow sections of our roadway. We may plow sections of theirs. There are, sometimes where in there are maintenance opportunities, where we will work in conjunction with each other. There are times, though, with development, that you will have sections of more rural roadways that are going to see increased traffic. In my opinion, that's part of the nature, the beast of growth and development. You can't build all the roadways out in the rural areas to urban standards, and who's going to pay for that and have that done?
So there's kind of a little tug-of-war, a little bit, as to, because part of it then becomes, the City of Post Falls has control over what that roadway will look like in that section. But then the Post Falls Highway District is maintaining the, I mean, only has control of the rest of the...
Post Falls Highway District, if there were some improvements that need to occur in the county, if there's an opportunity for that to be done in the county and meet City of Post Falls standards, that will be done. On occasion, we will have sections of sewer extension that go through a county section, and we'll build that section of roadway back to city standards. In this case, that does not open itself up, but where there are opportunities for us to get roadways improved, we will do that.
Okay.
Hey, Rob, from this, they're widening Midway all the way out to Maguire, right? On their side?
That is correct.
So they're make, they're, they're building Midway to city standards, and you as a traffic guy, most traffic's coming off, going to Maguire from there, right? They're not turning left, probably?
I would say 90% of the traffic is going to find that Maguire is the more desirable route to go. Granted, there are people who want to go different routes. I would probably be one of those who, I take different routes just to see what the roads are doing.
You're a traffic engineer. You do weird things.
Yeah. But with this construction, the sanitary sewer is going to be deep enough, it's going to require the entire road to be destroyed and completely rebuilt.
So they're going to rebuild the whole thing to city standards? They're going to take what's basically a substandard road right now, and they're going to rebuild it to full city standards?
They will build the entire southern section of it, between the Wildflower project and this project, and then they will also have to construct to 10 feet beyond the typical center line. So you'll end up with, I'm trying to think, about a 34-foot-wide roadway initially, whereas today, it's 28.
Okay.
And we aren't going to allow for parking on Midway, so that's an improvement for the roadway and operations.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions?
No.
Going once, twice? Okay. We'll go ahead and close the hearing, and open it up. I'll start all the way down.
Okay. Well, I really, I like the idea of moving it, or changing it, to twin-homes, because as was mentioned, it really, it allows for these to be owned or occupied, allows for people to buy them, instead of, with duplexes, they would most likely be rentals. So I like that, that there's just another product out there that is going to become available to the people in Post Falls. So I like that. A little, you know, the City of Post Falls, or the Post Falls Highway District thing always makes me, you know, roads are an issue, traffic is an issue, but as was brought up, it actually is going to be improved, become wider, a higher standard of road. So, that kind of eases my, any concern I have with that.
Okay. Ross?
Yeah, I don't really understand what the Highway District is saying here, but I don't see, it's not going to increase density. I don't see why this subdivision change would increase traffic. They're going to improve the road, so I see no issue there. And I agree, I think the twin-homes are only a benefit to the residents, because it creates an opportunity, should the owner decide to sell individual units, it creates a affordable housing option, and that's a win.
Absolutely. Kevin?
I'm good. I think it's a, nothing to say, nothing to add.
Okay. Ray?
Yeah, so, based on the staff report and everything submitted, it meets the requirements for subdivision, it meets the zoning...
It meets the zoning requirements. The minimum lot standards are met. As conditioned, everything is...all the subdivision standards are met. And, you know, even though they were met before, which is great, I honestly think that, I think Nancy is 100% right in that having these, you know, changing from a duplex to a twin home, you may not have any difference driving down the street, but the difference... But the real difference is going to be in the pride of ownership of people living there. And I think that's going to be a big improvement, and I think that's a really important thing. And so I really hope that we see more of these moving forward. That's just a personal opinion thing. It doesn't have really anything to do with this. So, but it does, I do think it meets the standards based on the criteria and the evidence put before us.
Vicki?
I agree also. I think it's a good product that we do need, that type of alternative housing rather than a single family and not going to a duplex or an apartment. And it'll make put some of our citizens' minds at ease if we bring these kinds of things in instead of apartments. So I agree, this is a good fit and a good change.
James?
Yeah, same thing. You know, even though this is a change, the destiny is not changing. I think it brings another type of housing product in there. And improvements to Midway and the connectivity to any future development that goes on out there. It's all good.
Perfect. I think the three things, yeah, meets requirements, it meets the standards, but it is, I think in this case, a better product with this change. So I would entertain a motion at this time.
Okay, I'll do it. I move to approve...I'm sorry, I move to approve subdivision 0011-2021, finding that it meets the approval criteria of Post Falls Municipal Code, substitute conditions 1 through 10 noted in the staff report, and direct staff to prepare a recent decision.
Second. I've been a motion second. Further discussion? Hearing done. Call for vote?
Carrie?
Yes.
Campy?
Yes.
Stephson?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Schlotenauer?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
All right, that brings us to the Prairie Crossing subdivision. We'll open that up, and Mr. John Manley is going to present.
Good evening, Commissioners. John Manley, Planning Manager, City Post Falls, presenting the Prairie Crossing subdivision, S U B D 12, 2021. Owner is G V D Commercial Properties, with the applicant being Jack Smatana from Frams, Montana. They're looking for approval to subdivide about 44.4 acres into 19 commercial lots. See the location here? It's at the northeast corner of Highway 41 and Prairie, south of the Trax, or what was the Trax. Current land use, transitional lands, it's undeveloped. Water provider for this would be Ross Point Water District, with sewer being provided by the City of Post Falls. Here you look at the surrounding zoning. Everything around it is commercial. That's in the city. You do have to the southeast of there, the Foxtail Pewee. And the rest of the lands to the east and to the north are Cutney County properties. What I did here is this is kind of an overview of the subdivision. There's two blocks. Block one has three lots. Block two is the blue. There's 16 lots there. It's important to note that these are pad lots for the intent to have separate users on each lot for lot development, rather than potentially what you may have heard as like a mall or something like... I mean, a mall could buy it if they bought multiple lots, but usually in this configuration, it's set up for internal streets and pad development. Looking at the subdivision review criteria, we're looking at the first two, water and sewer. And you can see in the staff report, the analysis on that, that they could meet those needs. Proposed streets are consistent with the transportation element in the comprehensive plan. The intent is to construct this compatible with the, with that transportation plan. There is some comments with doing a transportation analysis, which I'll show that condition. It isn't unusual for subdivisions of this nature to require some of those conditions. Four is looking at, is there any soil or topographical conditions presenting hazards or issues with this? And in staff report, you can see there were none. Zoning, is it zoned for this? Well, it's on CCS. There is no minimum lot size in CCS. It's fairly easy to meet our setbacks. So from the configuration on it, there wouldn't be any issues with creating a lotting pattern to meet the zoning requirements on this. Six deals with mitigating the impacts, growth paying for growth. This is done at the time of the impact fees. So with each permit, they would pay for commercial. It's the public safety and streets portion for commercial-type development. So the conditions I mentioned, so you see here, is update to the 2019 traffic impact study. Rob's here tonight, so there's questions on that specifically. But the idea is just to more or less be consistent with knowledge that we already know. Construct a 10-foot multi-use path along Prairie Avenue frontage at the applicant's cost, being clear on that. The ninth one is applicable sanitary sewer surcharges for the 12th Avenue force main to be paid. And then the 11th condition is prior to construction approval, copies of the encroachment permits from I T D for access on Highway 41 shall be provided to the city. So these are additional conditions that aren't normally on most subdivisions, but being the nature of where it's at on 41 and Prairie, create the safety valves for staff to collaborate with the development and make sure it continues to be consistent with that transportation master plan. Do you have any questions on the transportation element on this time?
Transportation questions? Anyone?
So will this be...will this be under construction after the Highway 41 project is complete, or prior to, or, I mean, during, or do we know?
That's why Rob's walking up here.
Okay.
Madam Commissioner, we do not have a firm timeline as to when they're going to go to construction. That would be best for the applicant to answer during their presentation. Our best information from previous discussions was that they were anticipating getting to, getting plan approval and getting to construction as soon as possible. It may be difficult to get to construction, and probably even less likely that they'd complete all the improvements during this construction season. We're in August, and we tend to run out of time somewhere between October and November. And we do not have construction plans before us yet for review. The Highway 41 project is well under construction. Right now, they are in the process of paving the section from about Horse Haven Avenue up to Prairie Avenue and connecting into the improvements which have been done north of Prairie Avenue. Per my meetings with the I T D two weeks ago, they are on track that around mid-September, that traffic should be transitioned over onto the new northbound lanes through this area. Temporary traffic signals have been strung up, and they are in the process of paving Prairie Avenue itself from Highway 41 to approximately 800 feet to the east. So everything is on track for construction to be completed with the Highway 41 improvements by the end of construction season, construction season in 2022, which should bode fairly well with when we would anticipate any initial certificates of occupancy to happen on this site. We would see that that should occur either around the same time as or after Highway 41 is done.
Okay. Would it affect getting oc...or the city giving occupancy certificates if the highway was not completed and there was...I mean, it's going to prob... Obviously, we're all hoping that it's done, but if it's not, it's going to really create some further traffic issues in that area, correct?
It depends what you would see as for the construction. If you are looking at a single building, a multifamily, that may not be enough to cause an issue on Prairie or Highway 41 if Highway 41 is not done. Single fast-food restaurant, similar case. If you were looking at a medium-sized box, like a large grocery retailer, and a whole bunch of apartments all coming online at the same time, yes, that could possibly have an impact. But we are taking a look at that with, as was mentioned, there was a 2019 traffic study that was done. We're having them update that because there were some initial assumptions made where things changed. I T, the Idaho Transportation Department, did not want to allow for a traffic signal at what this project shows as Stone Avenue onto Highway 41. That was because that did not comply with the Highway 41 corridor master plan. So we're having this project look and say, okay, when you come online, where are your access points going to be? How do they need to be sized? What type of restrictions need to be on them? On the far east end of the project is Zorros Road. Will Zorros be a traffic signal or roundabout? And at what timeframe and how much of the development needs to occur before that needs to go in? So we're trying to take that into consideration, and I think we can play that out. If this was approved by the commission or recommended for approval by the commission, I think we could work that out during the timeframe between now and when they go to construction to work with the Highway 41 project and make sure appropriate measures are in place to continue to have safe traffic.
So I think a part of my, a better question would be, are any of the businesses going to have direct access onto Highway 41?
None of the businesses will have direct access onto Highway 41 or onto Prairie Avenue.
Okay.
Based upon what we see right now, the Idaho Transportation Department has approved a right-in-only, so traffic northbound 41 is able to make a right turn onto the site.
Okay.
And then at Stone Avenue, which is the access point on the northern end, they are going to have a 3/4 turn restriction on that. That means traffic from Highway 41 can make a left turn onto the site, and that traffic from the site can make a right turn onto Highway 41, or traffic from Highway 41 northbound can make a right turn onto the site. Along Prairie Avenue, they are taking a look at a right-in, right-out allowance on the far west end, closest to Highway 41. City is generally supportive of that. We want to verify in the traffic study that that is going to be safe and sized appropriately. They are then looking at another access point, a little bit more than halfway between Zorros and Highway 41, that they are requesting a 3/4 turn movement at that point, so traffic eastbound Prairie can make a left turn onto the site. We are supportive of that, but we want to verify that in the traffic study that it would be sized appropriately and will not conflict with the turn movements and lane configurations for the Highway 41 widening. So we're verifying that it's going to operate safely. And then at Zorros, which is a quarter mile east of Highway 41, we know per the Highway 41 master plan that that's either going to be a traffic signal or roundabout. We just need to take a final look at the numbers to say which one is the best, and at what timeframe do we anticipate it? Do we anticipate needing it in 2022, 2025, or 2038, or somewhere in between?
Okay. All right, I think you answered me pretty well.
Mr. Seal, did you have something that you wanted to add?
I'm Seal, Community Development Director. Just to add on top of that, not that that wasn't enough, but I just had the one piece that, the fact that the, he does have two anchor tenants that have, that are looking at the site that intend to start construction after approvals and after the CIA is approved and after the traffic study is completed. Granted, they would like to construct the traffic signal or roundabout concurrently with the site improvements, but they are aiming to, I believe, you know, enter construction so that they can open probably at the end of '22, early '23 would probably be the... So that, the current construction project with Highway 41...
So kind of when it gets over, they're kind of planning that would be the timing?
Right. I mean, these types of anchors would not want to open their doors when there's still construction going on.
Yeah, okay.
Because that conflicts with their plans.
Okay.
Right. I can't imagine a major tenant wanting to sit there for months waiting for construction.
No, they're trying to time everything well.
Bring you back, review criteria, that's what we're looking at. So, you know, sewer, water, consistency with the transportation elements. That's why that we have those conditions in there to...it's not unusual with major commercial corners like this to have these conditions. So when you develop your construction plans and in construction improvement agreements, that you have those conditions there. So, you know, we believe that we've met that with those three criteria. The other criteria, soil, zoning, consistent there, and then the impact fees for review criteria six. So that's the review criteria. Any questions? For me, Cutney County was neutral, and D E Q had their standard concerns for construction.
Questions for staff? Nope. Okay. Thank you very much. Bring up the applicant.
Do we need that plan back up here?
Do we want to back up?
I mean, if you want it up. If not...
I'd like to see it.
Let's have it up.
Yeah.
I think it's a handsome plan, so I like it. Which one? I guess we can do...that was a little bit bigger. Oops. There we go. Thank you, John. I'm Jack Smatana with Frams, Montana Engineers, and I'm representing the applicant this evening. And Mr. Manley gave you a good introduction of our request and our project. I certainly can repeat that if you insist that I do, but hours getting late, I'd rather not. I have nothing to add to the introduction of the project. We worked closely with staff for quite a while now on this project. And we are in total agreement with the staff report. The review criteria is all very positive. And it included, I believe, 13 conditions, and we are in agreement with all 13 conditions. The agency comments were neutral in some instances, which is typical, and positive in others. So I've been spending some time today trying to think of what I could add to the staff report and clarification for you, and I really haven't come up with anything. So the comments made regarding the timing on occupancies and Highway 41 construction, we're completely in tune with that. And those projects are going well. That's a big project, you know, as you know. So I would just simply say that, in our view, we've met all the city code criteria and that we believe this is a great opportunity to continue with the vision to attract commercial development. And perhaps the most efficient thing I can do is to stand for questions.
Any questions for applicant?
What stores are going in?
Oh, we cannot go there.
I'd like to tell you that, right?
I was waiting for somebody else to ask.
It's on everyone's mind. It's just one person had to ask.
Well, you'll be pleasantly...
Surprised.
Surprised.
Any questions at all?
No.
We'd certainly like to thank the commission for their time and service to the citizens of Post Falls and your volunteer work as planning commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment in favor?
We have none.
Neutral?
We have one. Bob Flowers?
Does Bob Flowers wish to speak?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Bob Flowers, 3914 East Maplewood Avenue, Post Falls. Well, the reason I registered as neutral tonight was because I love commercial projects. I'd like to see more and more businesses move into the area. The problem that I have tonight is with the zoning of CCS. Because that... The problem that I have tonight is with the zoning of CCS, because that is so wide open that we, we could end up with a bunch of apartment buildings rather than businesses there. I mean, on your last public hearing, you saw how many hands the project had changed or gone through before now they're ready to build. And with giving them the go-ahead on this without the traffic studies done, without actually knowing what's going in there, or not, yeah, I guess you can't know what's going in there, but I just don't like the idea that they could slap a bunch of apartment complexes on that piece of property, or if the developer suddenly decides, well, I can't afford this anymore, I'm gonna sell it to Joe Blow, and he comes back and he's got a big piece of property, all CCS, and he gives us a wall-to-wall apartments. I, I, I just gotta, I don't trust something that doesn't say they're not going to build a thousand apartments in this area, especially right there at Prairie and forty-one, because the amount of traffic that that highway already has, and with all the projects that are already approved, I just believe it's, there's too many unknowns. It's, it's not the right time yet, unless they can come back with a solid traffic study to prove that they can, that it can actually be handled. And three, how about something that says they're not going to build a, a bunch of damn apartments there, that they're really going to put commercial businesses in there? Because I'd love to see a couple of good stores in that area. Something in between Rafterman and Post Falls, we've needed it for a long time. But anyway, that's my concern.
Thank you, sir. Any other neutral?
None.
Those opposed?
We have one.
Wishing to speak?
Yes. Eric?
Linkhammer.
What he said.
Yep. All right, sir. Have you state your name, address? You have four minutes, sir.
Eric Linkhammer, nineteen seventy-seven North Bunting Lane, one street over from the proposed development. I would like to go on the record as saying that I much like the overwhelming majority of this town, and realistically, everyone who is not paid to say otherwise, strongly oppose this and all other building or rezoning proposals. Like all growth, it brings traffic, unnecessary people, and is just not needed. We don't need to manage growth. I don't know whose, I think it was you. Pure nonsense. We can just have no growth. Accordingly, that's why I'm running for city council, seat number six in November. I will vote no on every one of these proposals, and I will only appoint commissioners who also vote no. That is all. Thank you for your time.
So that had nothing to do with this particular piece?
I think you should reject this piece and all others.
Thank you. Any others opposed?
We have none.
Does the applicant care to?
He cares to. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Flowers, for taking the time. I appreciate that. Just, just some, some clarification, I hope will help. Of course, this isn't a zoning determination-type hearing, just a subdivision hearing. The zoning was set at, at the time of annexation. And it's my understanding, and Mr. Manley, you might have to help me with this, but any, any type of residential apartment uses, anything of that nature in the CCS zoning requires a special use permit or a conditional use permit, is that correct?
Any standalone multifamily apartment complexes would need to have a special use permit, which is a separate public hearing, which would come before you.
That, that, that's my point, is that I think some of the things that, that Mr. Flowers was fearing is not by rights within that zone, and that there's a, I guess in my, my experience, a rather intense process through a special use permit, including hearings for that. And, and also regarding the traffic study, there was a rather complete traffic study done, and because of some, some very minor changes in criteria as a result of the ITD access permitting process, this is just simply a, a minor amendment to an existing traffic study. So it's, it's not that we're completely void of traffic study information at this time. So I, I just wanted to make those points. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
No.
I just want to do one, make one quick clarification, because I think it's pretty well-spelled out in the conditions, but I want to clarify probably mostly for the public here, is that in, in addition to them mitigating anything that's part of the traffic study mitigation, they're also required to do traffic impact fees and as part of any development that happens. So any, so commercial development has traffic impact fees and associated with the per-square foot of building and things like that. Or is it per trip? Rob, do you remember?
Square footage.
Square footage?
Square footage.
Okay, so square footage. So regardless of the timing of a traffic study, there's mitigation that's required as part of the traffic study, that's one of the conditions of approval here. And then there's also traffic impact fees. So I think it's really important to note that traffic mitigation is happening, it's all part of the, it's all part of the requirements.
Anything else? Any other questions before we close this out?
Nope.
None? Okay. I will open it up for general comment, rather than calling on you. Anyone care to start or share?
I'm, for one, I'm glad to see some construction starting on forty-one. I'd like to see some new businesses here in Post Falls to keep our dollars here instead of going to the surrounding communities. I mean, forty-one is going to be commercial all the way up, and I think, you know, it's time we get started on that, too.
Anyone else?
You know, I, I'll jump in. There's a couple of things, I mean, with regards to traffic and, you know, commercial traffic generation is different than residential traffic generation. It's really important to know that those things are, they're almost opposites. So when people leave their houses, they're going to commercial places, and so, and, and vice versa. When they leave the commercial place, they're, they're going back to their house. And so having a commercial center away from places that have commercial uses now, so let's just say, I was throwing a number, so let's just say there's a, a grocery store that goes in there, or maybe, so today, those people going to the grocery store all go south towards Mullen or towards Southeastway Corridor. Now the people can turn and go a different direction to go to a grocery store, and that takes pressure off of other parts of the traffic system in the city of Post Falls. It's an important thing to note that when you have a, a commercial node that develops in a spot that's not already developed, that it changes traffic patterns and can relieve pressure in spots that already have, that already have issues. So beyond that, you know, the conditions of approval are very well thought out, they're very well explained, they meet, it meets the requirements of our subdivision ordinance. The subdivision meets the zoning ordinance, and it's really important to note that without even doing a subdivision today, they, they've got a lot, a legal lot and a zoning, and then go build a Lowe's there if they wanted to tomorrow, they could apply for a building permit without ever doing any subdivision, and they can do that. It's perfectly one-hundred percent legal, they have that right. And so, you know, this is just, this is just giving us the opportunity to look at something that's a little more thoughtfully planned and a little more well-thought-out, and I think it's a, it's, it's a great thing to do, and it's been a long time coming. I think that annexed in oh-six. So it's definitely been a long time coming.
Any other further thoughts, comments?
I think we need the commercial space, and I, I don't know, I haven't, it makes sense, the, the logic on the commercial node and pulling traffic in different directions and the, I can, I can envision that it actually would relieve traffic on forty-one because people aren't all going the same direction. And I like the concept.
Agreed. Anyone else?
I was just gonna say, I, I agree with all the previous commissioners' comments. I think once forty-one is done, it's gonna change the whole way traffic is, is done out there, and then this development will bring in some more commercial. You know, my kind of hope is whatever goes in here, maybe that helps build out the tech park that is literally across the street. You know, I know that's a long-term plan, but anything we can do to bring jobs in here and, and give people jobs that are good wages within the city is, I think, good.
All right. Sounds like everyone's on the same page. If that is the case, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I would move to approve subdivision file number SUBD-0012-2021, Prairie Crossing Subdivision, finding that it meets the approval criteria of Post Falls Municipal Code as outlined in our deliberations, subject to conditions one through thirteen contained in the staff report, and direct staff to prepare a written reasoned decision to that effect.
Second.
Got a motion and second further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Campy?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Schottenhauer?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
So moved. Do we have any administrative or staff reports this evening?
There's none.
Commission comments? Anything for the good of the order? None?
No.
Okay. All right. If that would be the case, then I would look for a motion to adjourn. So moved.